Twenty twenty five, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council, roll call.
Joseph Jones.
Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Harms.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance. The United States of America, into the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So moved minus item four C. Um, can we have that pulled out separately, please?
Second. Thank you.
Roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Public forum, this is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Any public comment? All right, can send agenda less item C.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Four C.
Um, so I just wanted it pulled out separately so I could vote no, but um, that's, you already know, we've already had the discussions.
Is there any other discussion or is there a motion by anybody?
Yes, in theory, we have to make a motion to approve, yes.
Well, you don't, you don't have to approve the license. It is discretionary to approve a liquor license. You do not have to approve one. Um, Joseph, you made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay. Uh, is there any discussion? Or is it sort of the same discussion as last time?
I think it's the same discussion from the last time. I have concern that we consistently have. And I know from the young people and not only in our community, but every surrounding community, that is where they go to purchase their products. It is widely known amongst the young people. And I just think that, and we know there's issues and so I have a point of consternation with that and I can't do it. So that's where I'm at today.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that this still is the same, basically.
It's the same analysis as we talked about last time and we are looking at the code review process.
I apologize. We are looking through the code review process to see if there's anything that for future applications that we can make some adjustments to.
All right, further discussion.
There's there nobody here from their group again?
No, I'm gonna say no. I'm gonna table it until they could come. Can we table it?
You can do whatever you want. You can do whatever you want.
We asked them to attend.
Adam, is there a timeline for?
Yeah, there would be. Passwords saved on there. There's a, I think it's. We, this is the only meeting this month, so we want to have a meeting until August fourth unless it'd be just special to approve. And their current license. Can't recall when it expires.
August.
I think it was.
It's effect, well, wouldn't it be August twenty fourth since this would be effective date of August twenty fourth, twenty twenty five? So.
That makes sense.
I mean.
Yeah.
Just looking at the papers.
Yeah, it would make sense that, yeah, the new licenses would take effect. Can't remember for sure, though.
Would you guys consider, um, trying your, asking them to come and to share their? And Erin, you tell me if it's appropriate or not for us to ask them to come and um, share their plan? How are they further addressing this internally?
I think we can ask all of those questions. Okay.
I would like that.
I withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw.
So I would just move to table. Second.
Moved. Oh, did you? Okay.
I think I had a question mark at the end of it, but it was a statement. It's only the second time I've motioned anything, so.
So probably. Uh, Lauren did, and then Teresa, second.
Give it to anybody. You can.
All right, roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
All right, action items. Uh, five A, discussion on chapter one twenty two, peddlers and transient merchants.
Second.
Just a discussion. Is there any action you're asking for?
Uh, this is just a discussion. Uh, the proposed action would be to incorporate any recommendations into the code update, uh, taking place this fall winter. Just a short update from the staff report in here. Uh, staff did receive a call about a peddler, uh, active in the northwest part of town today. Uh, staff did locate the peddlers. Police had a conversation with them. Uh, they have now submitted a peddler's application that will be effective for one week as of tomorrow. And that information is up on our website now.
And what was the resolution of the peddler being pursued by the resident?
There was a prior call about a peddler last week. Uh, there was three peddlers involved in that. One was issued a citation, two were issued a warning. I believe the peddler that was issued a citation had been previously warned. Is that correct, chief?
He was also what they were selling.
The one today was a pest control company. Uh, the other one, I believe, was as well. Yeah.
Cause they hit my house. That's where it all started. I think they also went to, well, they, they lied.
They first hit Mayor Jones' house and then thought, you know what, we'll go to the east side of town to really avoid these elected officials and ran into Susan.
I was like their first house. So.
Okay.
It's risky.
Yes, yeah. Um, so I'm the one that asked to have this be brought up, um, because going back probably two months, a month ago, something like that, at nine, well, at eight fifty-five, somebody rang my door. And I thought, well, who's ringing my door? And then it kind of got me started on, because then I got text messages and, hey, this guy woke up my kid. You know, so I thought, there's no way we have permission, you know, even if he did have a permit, could he be at our houses until nine PM? Well, yes, he could. So I was like, this is ridiculous. So then I took the time to look through to see what all of the area cities around us are doing. And Mike was kind enough to do the research as well and then put it into our packet here. But um, I talked to Mike and said, you know, this is a little late, especially during the winter for nine PM when a lot of kids are in bed and. Yes. And big kids. And mostly dogs, but um, so just brought this around just so that uh, we could kind of maybe revisit our, our hours that we have for the peddler's permits to maybe align them. The only one that really aligns with us is Des Moines, um, to maybe align a little bit more um, with kind of the, what the, the area is doing. Um, there's even many of them that, like in the packet says, um, like Waki, you can't even go out on Sunday. Um, so there's other areas that really restrict not just the time, but also the days that they're able to come out. And I, ours is pretty wide open. So if we could just, you know, kind of revisit that, the times and kind of go through just a.
It's a good update.
Yeah.
I like the idea of having it end at sunset. I mean, that's when our park closes. And then in the, I mean, and in the summer, that does put it almost nine o'clock. But um, then during the winter hour, you know, winter months, it's earlier in the evening, in the day. I had somebody ask me, like, why does it matter? Because I had shared a great post that Susan wrote up. I think Mayor Jones shared it as well. And um, I said, one that, when they do that, then we've got contact information for who it is that's going door to door. And then if someone feels that there were high pressure sales tactics or somebody, uh, we don't want any of our neighbors taken advantage of. And just from a security standpoint, I think it makes sense to continue to enforce it. I think at one point, we used to put the photos of people when they had their permit and post it to Facebook. And I, I like that for two reasons. One, because, and it puts a name to the face when somebody's coming to their door. But then also reminds people that they should be asking if they have a peddler's permit when somebody comes to their door.
And I will say, I was kind of told by a, a neighbor here on Seventy Sixth Street that um, there actually is for the, the newest, I believe, pet pest company that, you know, has their permit approved. It is up on the website. I didn't click the link to see if you could get their pictures, but it does say.
They're not great pictures. They're pulled from a driver's license, but there are pictures up there.
Oh, well, you wouldn't want to see my driver's license, because I don't really look like what I look like these days, so. So if we could.
Notation.
Flight, flight notation.
So maybe if we could take a picture of them, like Lauren said, I, I really liked having that. I think that was easy for me as well to be able to just go on and, and look to see who, if anybody actually had a peddler's permit as they've, because the amount of people that have come around in the last two weeks has been, I, I mean, every single night I've had people. So um, you know, it would be nice to have, to have it kind of in our policy that we'll put it on social media and on the website with a, a picture if available or however you want to word it. So that if you can't get one up for technical difficulties or whatever, it's not like we're breaking our own policies here. But um, to have that and then just to kind of have, uh, maybe be proactive instead of reactive. You know, if the police are out and about driving around, if they can stop and, and talk to the individuals as they're, yeah, I mean, they're all carrying stuff, you know, most of them are on segways as well. So you can kind of spot them a, a mile away. Yeah, I'm impressed. So at least the ones that have hit my house. Um, so maybe we take a, a more proactive approach instead of having our, our residents call in, because I think a lot of people, A, they don't know who to call into. They don't really want to call Westcom, even the non-emergency number for it. So it just kind of puts a little bit more pressure on the residents. And I know the police don't always have the time to do it, but you know, if they're driving around, um, patrolling the city and they see it to kind of stop and have a chat with them prior. I think that might help a little bit cut down on the, the numbers that are currently in our city.
Let's start with um, the hours. Um, what would council prefer the hours to be?
I think literally eight.
I agree.
Or ending time.
I think maybe seven or eight, somewhere in there.
Definitely not nine.
I do know, like, a lot of the families in our, my neighborhood, you know, if they have younger children, they write, you know, don't ring the doorbell or don't solicit or, I mean, we see a lot of those already, you know, amongst our neighbors as far as do not solicit. But um, yeah, I think, I mean, I find eight o'clock. I mean, I'm up all hours of the night, so we're good.
Do you want people stopping by all hours?
I don't know. I do like to chat. I'm a chatter.
I mean, if they want to just chat, you know.
It, actually, they would probably prefer they don't knock on my door.
Seven or eight. Or sunset.
We split it.
Lauren suggested sunset.
Uh, let's, let's, I like eight is fine.
The thing I have, the issue I have with sunset is that it's.
It's nine o'clock.
Radically changes.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so seven or eight.
Cause you look at the areas surrounding us and it's only Urbandale and Bondurant that have it until eight, and of course Des Moines. But we can discount that, because kind of.
What's Clyde's?
Uh, I did that. And then on Sunday, one to five.
Next page, maybe. Oh, no, understaff report.
Fifty-eight, page fifty-eight has the, all the hours on it. Walkie's six o'clock.
I see it.
Early, very special.
Seven o'clock.
Like that.
And all seven days, seven o'clock, all seven days. There's, they get an extra hour in Urbandale, but they have less time on Sundays. Let's just do seven o'clock.
Nine AM to seven AM.
Seven PM, excuse me.
Yeah, that's fine.
Are you okay with a nine o'clock start on Sunday?
I'm not personally okay with a nine o'clock start on Sundays, but if they want to ring the bell at that point, that's fine. My sleep-in day.
I think most groups, I mean, maybe I'm being too generous here. But um, I mean, I think most people know Sunday's, you know, a day for most folks and they don't start until later. Yeah.
No, we had people out Fourth of July.
Yeah, surprising, which very shocked me.
All right, Monday through Saturday. And then.
It was just a holiday, though, wasn't it?
And then Sunday.
Noon to seven.
Noon to seven?
Sure, why not?
Sure.
Okay. That agreeable with everybody?
Cause we're still giving them an extra hour.
Yeah.
Right. And then the permit fees, um. AJ, are those unusual? I think those were.
We're on the higher end. Uh, we're not entirely out of line, but we are on the higher line for the.
Very unusual.
And then the five thousand dollar out-of-state bond is definitely on the higher end. So yeah, we haven't had a permit sent to the city for some time. Uh, you could argue at least that if the fees were lowered, people might be encouraged to do so, um, but hard to say for certain. Uh, so at least wanted to bring it up for discussion. If you'd like to adjust that downward, um, we can make that change at the same time.
So is the, the bond, is that just, I'm just thinking like the criminal bond, why would we have it be up at five thousand? Is that for damages or is that?
Damages, related prosecution, I believe, of any events or acts that occurred.
Something goes wrong.
Does that need to be specific for their, for the door to doors? It just, if the business is bonded and insured?
So the question was, does the business need to be bonded or insured?
I guess, so if they're, the, the bond required, is it, like, for example, what, does a businesses, if they, if they have business insurance, does that cover for the bond or is it, does it need to be specific for the?
They need to get a specific bond for Windsor Heights accountable to the city of Windsor Heights, the amount of five thousand dollars. If they're soliciting from a business that is out of state.
I'd be okay with lowering that from five thousand.
To, would a thousand dollars cover fees if we had to charge somebody and take them to court? Would that, would a thousand dollars, would that, like, what are we?
On a violation, a code violation, yes. I think the issue would be if there's damages, um, not just the fact that they're there unlawfully, or let's say they show up at eight thirty, so now they're outside the hours. They're cited. We, we, it would cover that, that cost, but I think if there's damages, that would be a different issue.
When's the last time we had an issue in this space or have we ever?
None that I ever have recalled.
I wonder if it, if that was designed for the storm chaser insurance, um.
Taking out the riffraff?
Yeah, that's, that's my guess is that, because, you know, after we had the derecho, then there were roofing companies from all over that showed up in the metro. So I, that's the first thought that I have is that this was designed to help prevent whatever harm from, from um, a five-by-night organization.
Well, I think the state law, the new state law addresses some of that, um, with the governor's new or, you know, the legislation she introduced this year to prohibit those sorts of, some of those sorts of activities happening. It's a result of what happened in twenty twenty-four. I don't know.
And we require that their business have insurance. And um, you know, I see like, I see two hundred to a thousand down for Bondurant, two hundred for Norwalk per license, requiring them to have insurance.
Why do we have an, I see we have an application fee. What, what is that?
Uh, most, many of our fees, many cities have fees for actually making the application. So you would review an application, even if that application was denied, you'd still be, uh, required to pay that application fee. And if the actual application is approved, then you have the fee associated with the amount of time that they've requested the permit.
Okay.
It's staff time, essentially.
Councilmember Campbell, to, to answer your question, I'd, I, I think you'd probably want to at least put some specifics on what that insurance would be for the business. Uh, you might get into the devil of the details on that to a certain extent. Um, whereas I guess the benefit of the bond requirement is, you know, exactly what you're getting from that as opposed to having to try to review whatever insurance documents they have, but.
Do we need to have a one-month duration? That's at a different rates? I mean, it looks like our, it's like one week at a hundred dollars, so we don't have a thirty days. So I'm assuming that would make four hundred dollars for a month. And some of these other places are fifty?
Twenty dollars a day, fifty, you know.
Yeah, having something like two fifty or something in between that one week and ninety days.
Yeah.
I'm even looking at like, Norwalk, a hundred bucks for a hundred, you know, for six, hundred and eighty, you know, or six months, right? Fifty dollars for six months in Montserrat, hundred fifty dollars for six months in Ankeny.
Think if we did at least do one for one month.
Yeah.
You know, throw that in there, these, that. And then if we, I mean, I wouldn't even be overly upset if we dropped it down to fifty or seventy-five dollars for one week. And then popped up, you know, two fifty or whatever for a month. And then, you know, part of it is to make sure that we're having them actually do what they're supposed to do. And that could help reduce a lot of headaches for residents, for us. And if you're a small business starting out, this, it could be a little bit, you know.
Totally steep.
I, I would, I like the idea of moving to like, a, a week, like fifty bucks. Um, a month. What's the average month that we've got here? Is there an average?
Seventy-five or fifty, it seems to be.
Yeah. Week is kind of all over the board, ranging from a hundred to thirty-five.
Once you get past a day, it's kind of all over the place.
Yeah, yeah. I do like whether it's a month and then six months of some sort of, you know, fee. I'm.
We don't have a significant sample size, but the, the group today indicated they'd be in town for two days and they'd get through the entirety of the town. So I don't know that we'll get a lot of folks here for thirty-plus days, the size of the community.
Unless they want to hit a few times, you know.
Mm-hmm, okay. So then maybe the ninety days is sufficient.
I li, I like the, the concept of adding the, the thirty day and lowering the cost of a week, because I think it removes that, or lowers that barrier of entry.
Yeah.
So like, there's not a good argument, like, well, we don't, we're only going to be here two days, you know, and then it's, we're making it cheaper. Cause the, the goal of it is not to keep people from door-to-door sales. The goal is to keep residents safe and that we know who's knocking on people's doors.
So Lauren, I think to your point there, so if we just, if we did away with the week, right, so if we did the day, move the, the month to a hundred bucks or seventy-five or something like that, and then move like a ninety day to like two hundred or two fifty or something like that. So there's a little bit of a.
Keeping the week just to kind of.
But maybe lower it to seventy-five like Urbandale?
Like a week for seventy-five for one week and then move up, did you say a month and then ninety days?
Mm-hmm.
And do that. I don't remember what you said.
Fifty and a month, one twenty-five and ninety days, two fifty.
You can keep a day at twenty.
What?
And one day stays at twenty.
You have those arbitrary numbers.
One day, twenty dollars, one week, fifty dollars, one month, one twenty-five, ninety days, two fifty.
Counsel, you okay with that?
Well, your numbers don't really add up. So if you have one week is fifty and then, oh, wait a minute, one week is fifty. Did we say one week is fifty?
Yeah.
Okay, so then a month at one twenty-five is still, okay, all right, super. I just need to make sure those did, were more than, you know what I mean? You know what I'm trying to do. Okay, I think we're good. I'm good with those.
And then the bond, do we want to make that a thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's pretty typical for like any event and stuff like that, a thousand dollars.
Okay. And I think there are some other recommended changes, license plates, the religious and political things. Anything else, Adrian?
Nothing substantial, as long as you're all right with the other recommended changes in there.
I would like to make sure that we kind of put in there that we would, um, add them to our website. I don't know that I read that on there, but I would like to have it so that our residents know that this is, you know, if they pull up the code, by some chance, they're able to pull that code up easily, which I don't know how that happens, but. Hey, um, that it'll show that, you know, it's there and then on social media. But don't hold us to having the pictures in case we do have technical difficulties or, you know, kind of wordsmith that.
It's probably language that we could add to the application itself, where they'd be required to submit a photo. Um, and with the understanding that it would be added to the website, and that might get around some of the issues of not having the photo.
Yeah, right now, the application requires the license submission, which is what we use this picture. Some other cities do require they come in for a photo or submit a recent photo. Certainly do that.
We don't got time for that. So do we use their license when we run them on the background? So they would have to provide their license as well as a picture of themselves? Or is that, like, I don't remember. I didn't read this very well. If it, it doesn't really give the line for like your driver's license number or anything like that.
Sounds like we just need to update the application, make some revision.
We have a lot of logistics to work through. Pete Roth, ROTH, City of Windsor Heights. A lot of logistics to work through. The code needs to be updated. We also need to part, put something in there about, you have a no solicitation sign, you can't approach the, the door. Um, I, I'm wary about photographs. I'm wary about social media, because I don't need a whole bunch of people, you know, chiming in about this business is not working. Don't do that. I don't need any liable claims to our department to have to fight that. Secondly, if I have a seventeen-year-old that's selling, I don't need to have a juvenile on, on a, on a website either with their picture. Sometimes a company will contact us and have five employees. And we're dealing with one, one company that will give us all the information for that. So I don't know how valid a photograph that they will give us will be that will match up to Tom or Tom Jones or, you know, John Doe. Um, but again, that's something we can do with it, with the permit. Um, the code can say has to meet all application requirements based on the official form by the city, and that should, should cover that. So um, we just really, we needed a starting point with the hours. And um, just to kind of see where, where the council stood with that before we could start diving into the other stuff, so.
I do know other cities put pictures and names and businesses up, because I did check on that um, to see how we were compared to what they were doing, so.
And the other cities do have a very nice communication staff, which it's just us, it's just me and Mike Earlbeck. So um, what, what if the council wants, will we make it work? It's just my suggestion that we keep it to the website, keep the information limited to what the business is. The officers know who they are. We, we can share the photograph with the officers, um, but that doesn't get put out. But I mean, whatever the council, and I'm, I'm going to be talking to Erin this next, next couple of weeks about some other code projects. This will be on, included on there anyway, so.
I guess I would much rather have it on social media, because a lot of times you can find that easier than going through all the multiple steps. I guess I would much rather have it on social media, because a lot of times you can find that easier than going through all the multiple steps. That you have to, to get to find that online, it's not like our website is the most easiest, I mean, it's gotten way better. But, you know, sometimes there are, you kind of have to go through a few steps to find it. Um, if you are able to turn off comments, you know, that would be another thing. You know, instead of allowing people to make their statements on a, a business, turn off the comments. And, you know, kind of do it that way, so that. You know, and we're also following what other cities are doing as well that way, so.
Look, it'd be an opportunity to, instead of doing a person's photo, just do the business. Because for me, it's not really about the person, it's about the business, so like the business's logo, say this, this company has a. Um, a permit for soliciting as an awareness, and then you can turn off those. Comments or whatever, but, so then you're not. Coming into some of those other challenges or issues that might occur with individuals, and that's the other thing, is, does each individual person have to be?
Yes.
Permitted, okay.
What about a, a post that says, uh, new peddler's permit, new solicitation permit was, was issued today through next Tuesday? And just link out to the website, and that way people can go look at it if they want to and not. With a business name, that somebody goes, oh, instead of them, you should buy from them, or, you know. Um, but make it easy for people, because like Susan said, somebody might not go, oh, hang on a second, I see somebody up the street, let me go pull up the city's website.
Are we able to stop comments? On, I, I mean, is that something that we can do, limit who comments on a post like that, or is that?
You could have no comments, you could just choose to have no comments, but. Can't be regulating content.
Right.
Yeah, it's best just to not have any.
I guess I like the idea of just putting on social media a link to the website's page. That way we're not calling out a specific business or promoting them or antagonizing them, people can go find the information. From the social media fairly easily from that, um. It's also logistically a little bit easier for us as opposed to trying to get all that information, creating a graphic. We're just use one standard template. In the instance, we get more than one per year at this point.
I like that idea, too, like, get back to our site.
How else do you need, AJ?
We're good.
For now. All right. By B, consideration of resolution number twenty-two-five-sixty, resolution approving a twenty-eight E. Between Windsor Heights and Urbandale concerning the crisis intervention team program. AJ or Chief Ross?
Just a few notes on here, chief, feel free to pop up if you want, otherwise, uh, Urbandale's passed this, uh, we. Planned for and budgeted for this expense as part of our last budgeting process. Right now, the anticipated expense, uh, for the service is estimated about forty thousand dollars. Uh, they do have somebody hired, there's somebody with experience, uh, that, uh. Has previously worked with the city, uh, and think will be very good in the position, uh, for the Windsor Heights purposes, we have, uh, the ability to. Request monthly reports, get additional information on who receives services, uh, just so we can track that and see how beneficial this has been for us. And will be invoiced on an annual basis in January, I believe it is, so. I think we're all excited to get this kicked off and, uh. Have this as a service option for when these types of calls arise.
I'm super excited about this, not only the partnership with Urbandale on this, but also just, um, I really. Think that this is, this, the crisis intervention team work is what. Law enforcement needs to be moving to, to deal with the ongoing challenges that they have, so. It's such a, a more proactive approach, and so I'm, I'm excited, this is a good step forward.
Any other discussion, comments? Roll call.
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Sure, all right. Aaron noted on, uh, five A, even though it was not a action item, there was still a motion and a second made. By.
Jones and Skiris.
Would you withdraw those?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At least somebody's paying attention.
All right, reports, uh, mine is in the packet, Ms. Harms.
Yeah, just a, a couple of things real quick, so I did, um, do the interview for the Uplift video. Um, and shared kind of Windsor Heights perspective and, um, why we participated, I hope I did us all justice. And, uh, so I'm excited to kind of see what that layer interviewing over the course of the next month or so, I think, um, to get all of those done, so. Um, that is up and coming, um, also, um, have a meeting this week with Habitat for Humanity. Uh, uh, humanity on the Women Build the Pro, uh, Planning Project, so, um, more to come on that to. Um, hopefully have a, a women's, uh, elected women's group do a build, um, so more to come. And I'll chat with Susan when I have more information, so you can bring it to your, to the, um, to the women's group. And then, uh, Windsor Wonderland planning, Christmas in July is well underway. Um, and so we have, um, some folks already, uh, food trucks and those sorts of things already secured. And, and some of our, um, contractors, and then, um. Uh, there's been a recommendation to also have kind of a maker's market, and so I'm, I'm betting that to see if whether or not there's an opportunity. Um, for, for something like that, so. Um, we don't have MAC this month, and I'm waiting for the Legislative Committee to be scheduled, so that's all I know.
Ms. Camp.
Um, I missed our last Windsor Heights Special Events Committee meeting, because my son was getting his adenoids and tonsils out. Um, but otherwise, plans are well underway for Fall Festival, if anybody wants Fall Festival stickers. Got some fancy ones over here. See, I think that's it.
Hello, Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I too participated in an outdoor. Interview with Uplift Iowa last week, uh, we filmed that at, uh, Colby Park. And it was, uh, really a great conversation about doing good things rather than hurtful things, and, uh. I would remind the council that coming up, uh, next week, or is a private showing. Of a container home that, uh, the folks at Uplift, Michael and Ashley are putting together, and then, uh. Public will be able to view a container home, uh, later on in the week, I'll, um. I'll have, uh, Michael and Ashley on my radio program to talk about what that container program is for housing. That would be about it, other than, uh, the foundation does have Nights in the Heights, uh, Tuesday evening. Which would be tomorrow, hope to see you, that would conclude my report, sir.
Um, I would say that the mayor and I attended the opening of the container that Mr. Libby was just talking about, um, it's worth seeing. And we have DART, uh, tomorrow, so more to come after that meeting.
Ms. Skiris.
Um, first, thank you to the fire department and staff for building our shed to hold the special events equipment. Uh, I appreciate all the Band-Aids and cuss words that, uh, were used to build the shed, as I, uh, hear it was not a very fun project. So I completely, uh, thank them for building it for us, so that I didn't have to either. A, get divorced, or B, cuss my own self, so definitely appreciate the FDD doing that. Uh, we had a special events committee meeting in June, um, where we, uh, had a smaller group, but we did talk about. A possible, um, business event, uh, happening off of university somehow. Um, a few businesses got in touch with me about, um, kind of doing like one of the. The neighborhood parties, only have it be a neighborhood business party, so. Um, more to come on that when, uh, planning has been kind of done by other people than me. Then I had a Metro Waste Exec Committee meeting last Wednesday. Um, tomorrow I'll attend Bash with the Chamber, and then on Thursday morning, Wake Up Windsor Heights with the Chamber. Uh, will happen on, at eight AM at Hy-Vee. Um, so I will admit to turning off my computer for most part, uh, over the holiday weekend. Um, but would like to thank Andy for returning my call last night about an incident in Colby Park and making sure that, uh, it was taken care of. Today for us. Um, see, next Wednesday will be a Metro Waste meeting, and I think that's all for me.
AJ?
Uh, just note, uh, Chief Ross collected the statistics, we had twenty calls, uh, related to fireworks over the last week. Uh, however, we had no reported injuries or property damage, uh, so that is good for Windsor Heights. And Sixty-Eighth Street, uh, Stage One is scheduled to be paved, or start paving Wednesday, so. I should, uh, see Stage One opening back up for traffic within the next few weeks.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Steven Skiris?
Yes.
Justin Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.